Virtual meeting has been provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this meeting was provided in the notice of July 21st, 2020. Said notice was emailed to Nutley Sun, the Star Ledger, and tapped into Nutley, mailed through the Nutley Township Clerk, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. Can I have the flag salute, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the Republic.
For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
Mr. DePisa.
Mr. Cornicella. Mrs. Dancheck-Martin.
Here.
Mr. DeMayo.
Here.
Mr. Ferrara.
He's excused.
Mrs. Quirk.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
He's excused.
Mr. Scolera.
He's excused.
Ms. Zaro.
Here.
Mr. Kozinski.
Here.
You have a majority, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Dr. Glazer, I guess.
I guess, don't be too excited, this is our board retreat.
Well, I wanted to make sure I was doing it the right way, that's all.
I'm teasing you. This is our opportunity to come together, we come together once a year in this format to really look at ourselves as a board and to be able to set our goals for the coming year. We have a lot of input that we use for that goal setting. Each of the board members completed a board self-assessment through the New Jersey School Boards Association. You will receive the results of that, the individual detailed results of that. Tonight, we'll be using those as part of our goal setting. But as we always do, we start off our goal-setting evening with information on the roles and responsibilities and the ethical responsibilities of board members. Tonight, we have our board attorney, Scott Evelyn, here to do that work. Following Scott, we'll have Kent Banyia, our Assistant Superintendent, woo-hoo, and Janine Locan Solo, our Director of Curriculum, woo-hoo, give you a presentation on the planning that's happened so far towards our reopening in September. I think you all know and the public is aware that we are mandated to open in some capacity in September as well as offering a fully virtual option. So they're going to talk about that. So we have that information to feed into for goal-setting. And then, as we do, we will have David DePisa, again, woo-hoo, new BA, giving a brief presentation on the proposed budget calendar. We use that budget calendar as well for our goal-setting and planning. And then we'll get into the actual details of our goal-setting for, it makes me gulp when I say it out loud, 2020, 2021. And in that section of our retreat meeting, Karen Greco, woo-hoo, our Director of Communications and Employee Relations, will be working to script-note and help us develop the language of those goals. We'll sit on those goals for a couple of days. We'll think about them, we'll reflect on them, ruminate on them. And if we still believe, after a couple of days of feedback and input, that that's what represents the board and district goals for 2020, 2021, we will put them on the board agenda Monday night, the 27th, for approval, a resolution for approval, to have those goals for the following year. Any questions about the format for this evening?
Not a question, but we will be able to get out of here by quarter to seven to make it to Spring Garden School?
We will be able to, as long as everybody's questions and comments follow. We have, I know we have our closed session in person at Spring Garden, but it's a whole box. So, you know, we do have somebody at the door at Spring Garden to make sure that everybody has access.
Okay, thank you.
So, other questions, comments? No? So, without further ado, I am going to introduce Scott Evelyn, our Board of Education Attorney to start us off tonight. Scott, and I'm going to mute. Scott, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Glazer. Ian, can you pull up the PowerPoint for us, too, please? Basically, to dovetail off of what Dr. Glazer was talking about, you guys are in the process of your self-assessments, the superintendent evaluations, your goal-setting. So, instead of like having some like ethics training that's not geared, this is really geared toward that. It's geared toward roles and responsibilities. So we're only going to take portions of the School Ethics Act that apply to that and how it's applying to what you're doing right now. So it's not, I'm not going to be overly long. You do, on your website, you do have the school board's roles and responsibilities. I know you guys have been through this a whole lot of times already. So that's why I want to take a little bit of a different tact with this. Ian, if you flip to the next one. So, just in general, those are the statutes, all right? The prohibited actions are things board members can't do. And then the Code of Ethics, that's what we're going to focus on. Because the Code of Ethics is the portion of the statute that really relates to roles and responsibilities. And I'm only going to be taking the portions of that that relate to your roles and responsibilities and how it will relate to your self-assessments and your superintendent evaluations and your goal-setting. So if you flip to the next one. All right, one section. Limit board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal. Help frame policies and plans after the board is consulted with those who would be affected. All right, that's subsection C, policymaking, as we've discussed before, and I know you've been through. Next one, Ian. The next section of the code. Carry out your responsibilities and don't administer the schools, which goes along with setting policy. Setting policy, not getting involved in the day-to-day operations. You hold the superintendent responsible, but you're not responsible for the day-to-day operations. Next one, Ian. Authority rests with the Board of Education. And this is one that, you know, listen, we all struggle with, that we have to act as a board. We can't take individual action or private action that would be contrary or compromise the board in any way. We have to act together. Go ahead, next one. Next one has to do with confidentiality. The role member of a board, the role of a board member, again, that I hold matters confidential, that are meant to be confidential, whether it's personnel, it's matters of litigation, things that we talk about in executive. Until such time as the matter is no longer confidential, then those minutes get released to the public and those things can be released. And also, and part of this one is important, to work in concert with your fellow members, to work together with them. Okay, next one, Ian, please. Another one that, look, we all struggle with, and I was a board member, too. Vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration the recommendation of the chief school administrator. That, you know, it's the chief school administrator that has to make the personnel recommendations that you would vote on. Again, defining the roles of board members. Next one. Support and protect school personnel. And the caveat here is in properly performing their duties. Yes, you as board members, you know, you talk about personnel things enclosed, you know, as you should, but your duty is to support and protect school personnel when they're performing their school duties. Next one. The chain of command. We talk about this all the time. And I know you guys, as board members, you get people coming up to you all the time, on the street, in the supermarket, wherever you're at, out to eat, you're going to hear things. And it's hard not to have a knee-jerk reaction to say, "I'm going to do something about that," or "I'm going to..." You know, that's where people cross the line. Refer the complaints to the superintendent. And the superintendent will refer to the principal or whatever level it needs to go to. Next one, Ian. All right, what I did real quickly here was to have a few scenarios. It's all great that we sit here and we go through these provisions of the code, and they all sound all nice and well. But when you apply it to real life, what are some real-life scenarios where these things in the role of a board member comes up? Here you have a situation. Two board members met with the president and vice president of the teachers' union to address concerns, there's concerns about construction projects happening in the school. The superintendent wasn't informed, but there was no determinations, there was no promises, nothing was made by the board members. Does this violate the School Ethics Act? What do you think, Erica?
Yes.
And you'd be right, go to the next one. Yeah, even when no decisions or promises are made, board members meeting with the association without the superintendent's knowledge violates the Ethics Act. Next one. Board member sends emails to the superintendent critical of a matter involving the member's wife, a teacher in the district. He's defending his wife when something happened. The member copied the other members of the board on the message. Is there a violation? Terry? I read your lips, I saw you said yes. Next.
Yes.
Yeah, this member, this member was suspended for three months for a variety of, you know, reasons that you see there. Next one, Ian. NJ.com and social media. This is where I've run into a lot of situations coming up in the last several years. So the member posts some information regarding removal of a staff member who was hospitalized and how the board was responding to this personnel situation. Has a violation occurred? Yes. Go to the next slide, Ian. Because it was something that was disseminated confidential. Obviously, it was on NJ.com or somewhere else with that information, then it's out there in the public already. But when you guys have something that nobody else has, that's where you draw the line. Next one, Ian, please. This one, I think you guys have already heard about. You probably have in your other training sessions. Board president created a bunch of documents for rating forms, for interview forms, for recruiting, all these like personnel-type of documents, wrote interview questions, and personally interviewed applicant resumes. And was this allowed? And it would be a resounding no. Again, policymaking, planning, and appraisal. Go to the next one. And any questions, comments? Like, again, I wanted to keep it brief and geared toward what you're doing right now with your self-assessments and with your goal-setting. And I'll be happy, you know, we can follow up on these with other ones, other short-term ones, any other ethics issues or questions. But thank you very much. And if there's no other questions, we'll move on with the meeting.
Thank you so much, Scott. We really appreciate you pulling that together and going through it. I know that we do it yearly, people hear it often, but I don't think that it can be repeated often enough. And you'll see in our goals, it is one of the goals to make sure that the board roles and responsibilities are known to us and to the community. So thank you very, very much. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Kent Banyia, Assistant Superintendent, and Janine Locan Solo, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, to be able to start to talk a little bit about our draft plans for reopening in September. Kent, Janine?
Thanks. Oh, you're muted, Kent. I think we're going to start with the high school, though, so, yeah.
Sorry about that, I've been doing that all day. Are you able to see the screen, Janine?
Yes.
Okay. So, we'd like to thank the board and Dr. Glazer for the opportunity to share with you some of the plans that we are considering at this time. We're progressing and developing plans. And what we are sharing are the latest thoughts we have moving towards a hybrid reopening. As Dr. Glazer mentioned, we are tasked with coming up with a reopening plan that considers student safety paramount, followed by instruction and social and emotional learning needs. Many districts are doing this at this time. You see varieties of options. We were tasked with finding the option we thought would work best in Nutley. And we did this through a process of collaboration with many people, starting with our administrative team at task force meetings. They will continue as we move towards a better understanding of what we're looking at. But to share with the board is very important, and we hope to do that today. So we hope to provide you with an understanding of where we are right now as well as some of the thinking behind some of the scheduling parameters that we have built. So, Janine, I'm going to start with high school, middle school, and then you can... Okay. So if you can see the high school plan, this, we started with five or six different options. We brought, we brainstormed from the guidance and from other districts, and we brought to the task force an option. And there was a clear favorite, and that is the plan where we were looking to develop from different stakeholders. The first understanding we have in developing this plan is, in a hybrid fashion, we would need to reduce building capacity to meet social distancing guidelines and improve safety considerations. With that, we took feedback from our fall virtual learning and understanding that eight classes was a lot for a lot of people. We also heard that we would like a little more structure in that. And when we built this, we considered, we're really considering three options that we should talk about. We're considering an option for hybrid learning. We're considering an option to transition to the whole school being on remote learning. And then we're considering an option for hybrid learning with some students choosing to stay home. So our plan hopes to accommodate all three learning needs and the ability to transition in and out of those different situations is very important to us. So in this schematic, although it may look confusing, it's really built on the premise that we would, in a hybrid fashion, bring in thirds of our population. We would do that by last names. We have gone so far as to run in our student information system what that would look like for class size. And we are confident with the whole school going, we would have somewhere in the order of 12 to 13 being the highest. I think Meredith got to me today and said, even with ICS classes, 13 was the highest with two teachers in the room. So we would look to a standard classroom with social distancing handle, about 15, we're estimating. So this would put us within the best guidelines we could to keep everyone safe. Last names A through F on the first day would be in class, and they would go through, in school, I should say, and they will go through four classes, periods 1, 2, 3, and 4. And we would follow that the next two days with rotating in the different populations of students. So one-third of the population will come in, and two-thirds would be virtual on those days. And we did this and focused on four classes at a time with the understanding that we could expand the instructional time closer to, this would be 50 minutes in this case. So instead of bringing students in and run through eight periods of 30 minutes or 25 minutes in our half-day schedule, which would give teachers only limited time for instruction. If we're all coming into the building, maybe we should consider expanding that or doubling that. And it also reduces transitions between classes. So that was something else we considered when developing this. So we would go through four 50-minute classes that would bring the students through periods 1 through 4. The next three days, we would go through periods 5 through 8. So we would, in essence, cut the day in half and focus on half the school day for three days and half the school day for the next three days. Students would then leave. And in the afternoon, our teachers would be available to support students virtually. They would be available for the 100% remote students and also to pull students to small group instruction using Google Meet. So this plan works in a half-day scenario. Lunch is not being served, and we are moving students through a six-day cycle. If we were to transition to remote instruction, we would simply continue the cycle and ask all students to show up each day for their class in a Google Meet. This structure would provide students with at least a check-in period. And during that instructional period, the teacher could continue with direct instruction, whole-class instruction. The teacher could release students to an assignment or an extension activity. Or the teacher could ask some students to stick around while other students get moved to an activity. So it provides the flexibility we need to do a couple of things in this model. I would ask, maybe going through these, we may want to pause for questions from the board. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have with the high school proposed schedule at this time. Okay, I will move on to the middle school. The middle school schedule is very similar. And it's unpurposely, with the understanding that we have the secondary one-to-one devices where we are going through thirds of the population being in class as well as virtual. There are slight differences that you'll notice. First, you'll see periods 1 through 4 start differently. It goes period 4, 1, 2, and 3. There are some differences between our high school and our middle school. One is that at the high school, students have the ability to take eight academic classes, most of our students do. While at the middle school, they take seven academic classes and a lunch. We would schedule that lunch in order to prepare for the transition back to school. And that would become more of a study hall in this model. And putting period 4 at the beginning would allow us to stagger students into the building for screening purposes and to keep social distancing. You'll also see periods at about 45 minutes of instructional time, but you will see more structure in the afternoon. After dismissal, we will run through the four periods online for the two-thirds of the students that are home that day from 1 to 3 o'clock. So one thing we heard, especially from the middle school population, is that students may need more structure. When looking at learning styles of student ages and their independence level, we think this mandatory check-in would benefit our students. So you would see a check-in time for in-person students as well as the virtual students during the afternoon. Whereas the high school, with more independent learners, you have more office hours and drop-in support options there. Again, if we were to move through all remote, you would see the classes continue the same way, where all students are checking in every day in the morning during that time. So again, we think these plans really fit the needs that we've heard. We heard to reduce the amount of classes. This essentially does, in two, three-day cycles. We heard to maximize instructional time if we are bringing students in. We tried to do that. And we heard, you know, to provide more structure, especially at the middle school. And we were able to do that as well in these models. Are there any questions about the middle school or even the high school proposed plans?
Kent, when you say you heard, that was through your committee meetings that you heard concerns of parents on grammar school, middle school, whatever it might be. And that's what we're trying to implement here. Because I know there might have even been a couple of parents that had concerns that ended up on your task force, for lack of a better term.
Yes, sir, when I say we heard it, through various feedback mechanisms from task force to survey data to, you know, teachers letting us know. We didn't hear about structure just from parents and community members and students. We also heard from teachers that they would benefit from a known time to meet with their students, especially for special ed populations. I will note that the thinking right now is to prioritize self-contained special education students as well as ELL students to come in every day and go through this schedule. So they will have the option to come in on a daily basis in those classes.
Thank you.
Janine? Would you...
I was going to say, yeah, there's no questions in the chat either. I know you're sharing your screen, so you couldn't see it. But I'm going to move on to elementary, then. So we also wanted to share with you a draft elementary hybrid schedule that the team's been working on. You'll see that this schedule follows that cohort structure that we know through all the guidance is best practice. So we would be dividing students into a Group A or a Group B cohort within a given classroom. And you can see that each group would attend two mornings a week. So if you're in Group A, you would attend in-person on Monday and Tuesday and then virtual on Thursday and Friday. And then that Wednesday in the middle, I'll talk through in a few minutes. But I just want to walk you through what the day would look like if it was an in-person day or if it was a virtual day. So just keep in mind that students would be attending each week two in-person days and two virtual days, with a Wednesday being an all-virtual day, which I'll get to in a minute. So during the in-person day, students would arrive at about 8:20, and there would be some kind of a screening procedure that we're still working through. And we allowed a lot of time here for arrivals and for those procedures so that at 9 o'clock, from 9 to 12:30, the students would move to their homeroom. And we started to sketch out what some of that time, what content areas might be taught there. But again, we're still in discussions. What we really wanted to prioritize was math and ELA. So right now, we're thinking about a 60-minute chunk of time for math, which kids would get in a normal schedule every day if we were 100% in-person. So we liked that. And then the ELA in a 90-minute block, and then a 60-minute block for either science, social studies, health. And that still also allows a half hour of time in there because we know, especially the elementary kids, may need to stand up and may need to stretch a little bit. So we're kind of taking into account that we may have to do some of that as well. In the in-person day, so students would arrive at about 8:20, and they would be dismissed at 12:30. So a typical single-session day. And then they would be dismissed to go home, to have lunch. And then, if you notice, from 2 to 3:30 there, there's something that we're calling a special period. So whether a student is in-person or virtual, a lot of the discussions that we've been having are around what's the best way to offer those specials, the art, the music, the library media, the world language. Because typically, those teachers see so many students in a day, and we want to minimize their contact. So even though we really, really value that content and we know that that's the highlight of a lot of students' days, we're trying to figure out a way to keep those specials as 100% virtual for all students. So one of the things that we talked about is, regardless of whether you're in an in-person or virtual elementary day, in the morning, your specials teacher would post that day's lesson in a pre-recorded video. So let's say that Monday is my class's day for art. Then in the morning, there would be a posted lesson from my art teacher, 20 minutes or so, walking me through the lesson for the day. And I would watch that. If I was virtual, I could watch it really at any time during the morning. If I'm in-person after the dismissal and during the lunchtime here, maybe I would find some time to watch that also. And that would be the specials instruction. And then during that 2 to 3:30, our specials teachers would schedule check-ins with their kids. So whatever classes that they would usually meet with on Monday, let's say, they would allow like 20-minute either office hours or maybe some kind of a live extension activity. We're playing around with what this looks like. It might not be something that's necessarily required because we know that with specific times and with asking students to log in at specific times, it can get a little bit touchy because elementary isn't one-to-one. So we want to minimize that. And we do have some of that that I'm going to talk about in the virtual model. So it might be that from 2 to 3:30, maybe my special time is 2 to 2:20, that the art teacher is going to do a live model of that pre-recorded lesson and take questions. And if I watch that lesson and I have questions, I can attend the office hours and the extension, or maybe I don't need to. And the specials teachers may differentiate that a little bit also. So if they know that a student maybe isn't attending regularly or could need some extra support, they may ask the students to attend during that time for extra help. So that would be what that in-person day would look like. And again, depending on if you're Group A or Group B, you would either be attending in-person on Monday, Tuesday, or on Thursday, Friday. I want to walk through next what the all-virtual day would look like. And I see a question coming in the chat. And I think I'm just going to get through this and then take it at the end, if that's okay. So if a student is on an all-virtual day, so let's say I'm in Group A and I came into school on Monday and Tuesday for my in-person instruction. And now it's Thursday and Friday. I'm going to be on the virtual track those days. And so during those days, in that 8:30 to 9 o'clock block, when most of the students who are coming into the building are getting screened, our classroom teachers, we're hoping, are going to be able to have a few minutes just to check in with the kids who are virtual that day in their class. So half of their class is coming in, and the other half is going to be virtual. So during that 8:20 to 9 o'clock block, maybe they check in with those virtual kids and say, "Okay, guys, remember on Monday and Tuesday, we talked about these learning objectives? Remember I said you were going to work on this project?" Or whatever it is in Schoology? And just kind of sets them up for the day. We heard a lot of feedback from parents that having that initial contact in the morning to just set the stage and to talk kids through what they're expected to do when they're virtual is helpful. And if we can utilize some non-instructional staff to help with the screening of the kids coming in, we are freeing up a little bit of time there where classroom teachers could have a very brief Google Meet just to review the expectations for the day and set those virtual kids up. So after you have that initial meeting, if you're on a virtual day, then from that 9 till 12:30, you would be doing assignments that are hosted in Schoology. They would, if you look at the time allotments again, and we're still... They would, if you look at the time allotments again, and we're still working through this, but they wouldn't be, you know, the same length of time as the in-person lessons. They would be more extension activities, reviewing concepts that were taught during those first two days and reinforcement and that sort of thing. So you have a little bit more flexibility in this time when you're virtual, obviously, to get this done. You have a big chunk of time here. And then you would also attend a specials period in the afternoon, the same way that you would for your specials teacher if you were in person. So regardless of whether you're in a virtual or an in-person day, your procedure for the specials is always the same. There's a video posted in the morning, and then there's some kind of a live session or extension activity in the afternoon. One of the things that kind of differentiates our plan from a lot of other districts that we're really working hard and we're proud of is that we're trying to build in some time in the afternoon during the all-virtual day for teachers to still meet and have some direct instruction or direct contacts with the students instructionally. So in addition to checking in with them first thing for a few minutes and setting them up for the day from two to three o'clock, and again, we're still, this is still in draft form, so we're still talking through this. But we'd like to have a time in the afternoon where the teachers could then get on a live Google Meet with the kids who are all-virtual and do sort of a condensed version of the instruction that they did during with the kids who were in person. What we liked about this is it helps teachers in planning because it helps them really keep a really clear scope and sequence of what they've taught to the students, especially in elementary where you're teaching a variety of content areas. And it also lends a really predictable structure. Parents were saying to us that the live Google Meets were really helpful for students. It held them accountable in a different way. And really building that connection. And we know that especially with developmentally appropriate practices for kids in that age group, having, being able to see your teacher face-to-face, right, without the masks on and things like that through the Google Meet is helpful as well. So that would be what a virtual day would look like for students. So again, you would be attending two days virtual, two days in person, depending on if you were in group A or group B. And then that Wednesday in the middle there, we're talking about making that an all-virtual day. And so what that would look like is everybody would be virtual on those days. And we would use that for mostly small group instruction and some teacher planning. We did build in here a whole-class community meet. One of the pieces of feedback that we got from the surveys and in our groups, in our feedback groups, was the teacher saying how helpful the Google Meets were for community building. And so when we started to build this schedule, we noticed it was always in cohorts, cohort A, cohort B. And there wasn't really a time where you had your whole class together to do more of that social-emotional learning and community building. So we thought that that Wednesday, we could build in a whole-class community meeting. This is also going to help us with the implementation and pilot of a social-emotional learning curriculum that we're moving towards as well. And then the rest of the afternoon here and the morning would be small group instruction. So imagine that if you had students on a specific reading level, like a reading level L, let's say, and two students were in group A and two students were in group B, this would be a time that regardless of what group or cohort they're in, you could meet with them in small groups on Google and address specific skills or strategies that need reinforcing. So we would also be utilizing that Wednesday for those small group meetings and also a time for our counselors to have some office hours. You know, we found that students have really been taking advantage of a lot of the school counseling opportunities that we provided them during this time. And so we wanted to figure out a way to build that in and make it a little bit more of a predictable structure around when kids could meet with a counselor and could have those conversations. Separate from this, if you're looking at a 100% virtual schedule for those parents that may choose that option or if the district has to, is required to move towards 100% virtual, we would be hoping to keep a similar structure to what a group B or a group A would be doing during their virtual day. So we would hope to keep the model that the teacher would be checking in with students first thing in the morning, setting them up for the day, assigning some work in Schoology, and then holding two of those synchronous Google Meets. So usually on a virtual day, they're doing the in-person instruction for the other cohort. During a virtual day, it would just be two of those Google Meets, each with half the class to do that direct instruction. I know that was a lot, so I'll stop talking and I'll take any questions. I know there was one in the chat. Let me see.
Janine, can I read you this question?
Yeah.
TK asks, "Can you elaborate a little more on the plan for special needs students, elementary in particular? Kent briefly mentioned those children would be prioritized for in-person, but would like more details."
Yeah, I think we're still working with our Director of Special Services around exactly the specifics. This is still in draft form, but we are prioritizing that. If you think about what our typical in-person day would look like, we're hoping to offer that instead of for the two days a week. We're prioritizing that for the self-contained students, ABA, and our English language learners so that they would be able to attend daily. Any other questions that I can answer?
I'm sorry, someone else in?
TK asks, "Full day."
Right now, our schedule is built around the security dismissal. We are looking at maybe do some optional extended day if it's possible. We're really just still exploring that option of what that would look like. But the instructional day would be until twelve-thirty at this point.
I think one question I might have is, obviously, this is still in progress yet. But when we get to August the fourth, if that's when we're going to roll it out, are we then going to have some type of a town forum or get this information out as best we can? Because I'm sure you're going to get feedback of parents that aren't able to fit into their schedule what we're trying to do from our side.
So Charlie, we committed to the public to communicate the plan by August fourth. I believe that we'll be ready to do that sooner. We're going to do it in a variety of ways. I know that obviously we'll do it through the website and that. But we will need to have some public opportunity, right, for people to hear, whether that's a response to video or town halls like we did at the beginning of this process in June. But we will make sure that every person in the community is well-aware.
Yeah, actually, I know it's difficult in this climate, but we might have to go, only a suggestion, might have to go to the PTOs and have a meeting at the PTOs and let them disseminate it down to their group.
We're going to be communicating the plan before August fourth so we can have the PTOs perhaps also send it out through their chain. And maybe, you know, we can do a virtual meet by school to answer questions. But I don't see it as realistic that we're going to have an auditorium-based PTO.
I know, I didn't mean that. But I meant that if we have to have a PowerPoint in an auditorium where ten people come in in a cycle or the PTO has a meeting and sets it up, just, we're always, that communications, as you know, we're always lacking somehow, no matter how hard we try.
I was going to say, if we built a billboard and put a banner behind it, we would still be lacking.
Wasn't there a movie like that where a woman put up the billboard on the highway?
Yes, there was. And I have to say, and I'm really proud of this, and maybe at the board meeting is a more appropriate time than at the retreat. But we have had tremendous feedback, actually, about our communication, about how transparent this process has been. Lots of emails to me, I know to different board members and principals, as well as to our webmaster, which comes right to Karen Greco, our Director of Communications. So I know we, somehow, somehow, we always miss somebody, but the feedback's been really positive. Has there been other, now that you've thought about it for a second, any other questions, comments? Hold on, I'm not in the chat. I see a chat came up, but I'm not in the chat. Hang on one second.
There's a question for, what about kindergarten? I don't know if Janine or Kent, you want to take that one?
Janine, probably.
Yeah, yeah, so kindergarten right now, again, is still in draft form. So we're considering the schedule that I shared out. And there's also been a consideration around maybe having students attend in cohorts in an A/B as like a morning and afternoon instead of it being alternating days. So that's something else to think about, too.
There are different requirements for kindergarten right now from the guidance, which is two and a half hours as opposed to a longer school day.
Mr. President? Scott, I think Scott has a question. Scott?
Yeah, just if I may, and I know we're in a different world right now, but just like a regular public meeting, if the public is going to be making comments or questions, I would just suggest that they state their name and address for the record so we can have it in our records, just like at a regular public meeting. And this is a public meeting.
You're right. Thank you.
I will say the other thing, we've been having some great conversations with the administrative team around, especially for the elementary students, how to make them feel welcome and how to try to keep that warm environment, given all the restrictions. People are brainstorming about maybe having teachers do like a Google Meet before school starts, you know, so that they can get to know their kids and things like that. So I think there's a lot of that going on, and we're really trying to think about the whole child and the best way to make this transition as seamless as possible.
Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? I see that somebody in the chat, Danny, asked about trying to remember to mute, but it looks like everybody is muted, so thank you for that. I think the more we do this, the better we get. So that's an important aspect of our plan here, too. So next on our goal-setting information, sorry, information for you to consider as we're looking to set our goals for next year is looking at a proposed budget calendar. One of the things that we've done each year is develop one of these budget calendars. And I know in the first year, there were lots of suggestions and struggles. We were able to change our entire budget system. Karen Yemins, the business administrator at the time, helped us move to a zero-based budgeting system. And we changed the calendar in that first year. In the second year, we implemented that process, and Karen reported to this group. And the result of the board retreat group on the budget at that time was the Ad-Hoc Budget Committee, which I think was a really wonderful suggestion of the board. I think that it was really powerful, especially in the year, the third year, when we really needed it, right? We really needed to come together as a group and scrutinize and look how we were going to accomplish what we accomplished. This year looked a little bit different with the interim BA and a pretty straightforward budget. There wasn't the same kind of needs. Given the current pandemic situation, our current buildings closed but schools fully operational for business situation, I think again this year, it's going to look different. And I'm very excited to formally introduce the community to David DePisa. He is the business administrator that was appointed by the board. And I'm hoping that he will be approved by the Executive County Superintendent on Monday night's board meeting. David is an experienced business administrator. He comes to us most recently from Bergenfield and before that from Lindhurst. We are thrilled to have his leadership. And I believe that David is going to do a wonderful job with our central office staff and stabilizing the process and stabilizing our procedures, honestly. So for tonight, David steps into this role again, for the fourth time that I've been here, in presenting a draft budget calendar and explaining to the board what that means, where the different budget milestone dates are, and what we, maybe, David, what we might expect going forward into this September school year. So David, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer, and I appreciate everybody's warm reception into Nutley. And I really look forward to a long-lasting, fruitful relationship. I can tell you that everybody's been more than cooperative, and it's a great group of people that I'm working with, board members as well as staff members. Ian, if you could bring up the budget calendar. The draft budget calendar is something that I like to distribute naturally with the board's approval with this retreat and the goals and objectives. My strategy is, is to be honest with you, the 21-22 budget seems crazy to be talking about, but that's where we need to be. So in October, and providing that everything goes according to the tremendous amount of work that the staff has put in with the opening of the new normal, in October, we're going to do a budget kickoff. And we will open up and use the budget projection software that's in our CSI system this year. And then that will allow the administrative team to go, principals, supervisors to go and talk to their building-based people and build some requests. The staff can build the budget into the CSI software as it states. I'm not going to read verbatim conceptually. In November, the principals and supervisors will start meeting with central office, the Assistant Superintendent and the Director of Curriculum to talk about their proposed budgets and what the requests are. And then in December, the last day for principals and supervisors to enter into the data into the CSI. And the support documents would come to the Assistant Superintendent and the Director of Curriculum. The middle of December, the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the Director of Curriculum can start meetings to review the instructional budget requests. That brings us to the holiday break. When we return from the holiday break, the central office administration will sit and finalize, believe it or not, a draft budget sometime of the first week to ten days in January. And then my goal is, is by the eleventh or so of January, be ready to present the draft budget to whatever committee, whether it's the Finance Committee or an Ad-Hoc Budget Committee of the board for their input on what all the stakeholders in the district have come up with. And then we now have about a month and a half before the Governor's Address. I'd say a good four to five weeks before the Governor's Address to really come up with a unified budget. And then once February comes and the budget address is there, we know where we stand. We're going to use a zero-based process. Naturally, we could use the prior year's information for starting, for a starting point. But I really don't want to just add percentages on to different lines. I'd really like people to assess their needs, eliminate and add, and use a zero-based budget and build what they actually need. Curriculum textbooks should be reviewed by the Director of Curriculum. And all of the proposals and the cost of materials should be placed with the backup materials. And if there's any multi-year purchases that they're looking for, we need to see what those prices are for year two, three. I don't think we're going to go any more than three years, but there's, in some instances, if you're doing a new curriculum, it could be up to five years, but I don't anticipate that. That's up to Assistant Superintendent, Director of Curriculum. I can tell you that I'm a firm believer in transparency when it comes to this. And as I stated in the interview process and as I'd stated in previous districts, everybody needs to be involved in this process. And what the requests are initially, and then what the final product is moving forward could be slightly different. However, the end product is going to be delivered back to the stakeholders that started this process in the beginning so they know exactly what is put into the budget and what they have to spend moving forward for 21-22. I can tell you that I don't know if supervisors or administrators in the past have been able to utilize the CSI program for budget input. We will assist in central office as much as we can. I don't know if we'll be back in person, but my goal would be sometime in later September to have this overview with them so they're introduced to this concept and get some feedback and see who needs some help, if any. But I can tell you that with this But I can tell you that with this stage of the game here, getting back to school is probably the most important thing and how we're doing that. So this budget calendar, as much as it would be a, 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 a great utilization tool in the beginning to get everybody acclimated, that might not happen, but the procedural part of this will happen. I can tell you that what we like to do is, is I always like to have the budget sitting in the software at the state level, waiting for that budget addressed by the governor. And then we can make minor tweaks up and down depending on what that address brings us. I know that there's planning for facility planning for the five-year facility plan. I know that there's some ongoing projects that have been discussed in facilities and finance. Those are all incorporated into this, but the board can have an active role once we put the numbers into the budget and tell us, yes, this is, this is what we suggest and this is what we like. Or no, what about this? And we have some time to dialogue as opposed to last minute. And then you don't have an idea of what to do. And maybe, not that you forget something, but the poor planning becomes an emergency at the last minute. So this is my roadmap for the budget for 2122. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. It's pretty straightforward. And like I said, the communication had started already in the district with, within supervisors and myself and principals and also most important central office. So I think everybody sees that this isn't just words on a piece of paper. I actually believe what's here. So I think we're off to a good start.
Thank you, Dave. I, I see Terry shaking her head because we've had concerns in the past. We, we seem to get down to the wire and then we're trying to jam everything in or move something around. And, and because of our committee system, two or three people know about it and God bless them, but then they've got to disseminate it all down to us. Maybe we can find a way that all nine of us can be somehow involved in that process right to the end. And I know it's difficult, but it, it, last year it fell back on Terry and Erica and Sal Ferrara and, and it was well done, but some of us weren't always as informed as they were. And nobody's fault, except maybe we can look forward to correct it. That's all.
Absolutely. And I look forward to anybody, you know, email me, reach out with some suggestions. We'll put them all together and we'll come up with some kind of a plan that's amenable to everybody. It's, that's, that's the way this is going to have a positive outcome, not by, not by anything else, just keeping everybody in the loop. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And you just gave the very best segue to the actual goal setting part because, Ian, you can put up the retreat PowerPoint, I think. But the reason it was such a good segue, and we're going to talk about it this evening, is that all of the members of the Board of Education are asked to complete a board self-assessment each year. It talks about how the Board of Education is doing in several respects. There are nine questions, but they're really based in three areas that I'm going to detail. And we're going to look at some of those self-assessment pieces as part of our goal setting. And David, in each section, the board members have an opportunity to not just evaluate, but to make comments. And the budget comment comes up repeatedly because as Charlie, Mr. Kozinski said, we, we plan, right? This is the fourth year we've had a calendar. This year, of course, we were remote and we had an interim BA and little support in the office. The budget itself came together and luckily it wasn't, thank goodness, I'll say it a hundred times, not as detailed as the one we had to do the previous year. But having, again, I'll say it again, we're looking forward to your leadership. We're looking forward to you stabilizing the central business functions and stabilizing this process. So thank you and thank you for your presentation. All right. So moving into this whole thing is the retreat, but since I wasn't presenting, it didn't make sense to go back and forth between my PowerPoint and everybody else's. Ian, you can go to the next slide. I did detail the agenda already. We've already welcomed the community into this process. Scott was able to detail the roles and responsibilities of the board members for the community. He also gave some insight into the required ethics that board members are expected to uphold in the community. You had Kent and Janine already go through the draft reopening plan and then the proposed budget calendar from David just now. So this part of the, the agenda is the specific piece to the goal setting. Using all of that information to be able to develop what will be our goals for the following year. Ian, the sheet, there, there's a board self-evaluation 2020 document, two-page document, if you could post that, please. Thank you. So each board member completes these nine questions. I'm showing the community what it looks like and giving you some of this feedback. It is public. The information, there are questions and then the, the, it's self-assessed on a scale of vital, very important, somewhat important, not important, not observed. And then there's a summative score. The reason that I have this one posted, and I don't know, Ian, if you can make it any bigger for people to see. And again, board members, you'll all get your own copy of this as well. But I wanted you to see this because to me, this was such wonderful growth to see everybody come together as a board of the whole. We talk about that view of board of the whole a lot, not individuals acting themselves. We do have a committee structure of the board, which is very positive, but as Charlie said, sometimes the communication amongst just the chairs makes it challenging. But I wanted to share this for the whole community. This, just so you know, everybody takes this individually. You don't know whose answers are whose and you get, you get what you get, right? You get the summative. This, this section is the very first section and it asks the questions, I as a board member. So as a board member, these are your beliefs based on these questions. And as you can see, I'm just going to go down. The first one, planning. The board is a planning body focused on the district mission and goals. And I'm going to say, as somebody who was planning this part of the night, to see that all eight people who responded, responded that that was vital and gave us a perfect score in planning just made this whole night perfect for me. But beyond that, as we keep going down, policy. The board is a policymaking body focused on the development, review and revision of policy. Seven of eight people found that to be vital. Again, almost a perfect score. Student achievement. The board requires written curriculum and systemic evaluation focused on student achievement. Seven out of eight of us responded that that was vital, a 3.9, again, almost a perfect score. Finance. And even though we, you know, we've shared some feedback with you, David, on finance, the board provides financial oversight for budget development and evaluation, program support and equity. Six of eight of us believed that that was vital with a, with a 3.8. We continue along this way with board operations, board performance, board and superintendent relationships, board and staff relationships, board and community relationships. We talk about what our board does as far as planning, what our board does with the community to plan. And, and it is really exciting to see that in this section, this whole section, how we plan, how we work with the community, how we come together collaboratively, that we review the action plans that have been developed to support goals, that we monitor our progress towards achieving the vision and goals, that we participate in this process, recognize the importance of the process and the district mission and goals. We got a 3.9 out of four. And ladies and gentlemen, as a board, that level of growth for all of us is huge and something we should be really proud of. There are comments in each of the sections, comments such as for, for this, the board strives to meet these goals. The board has done an excellent job of participating in the strategic planning process, continuing to set and communicate. The board does a good job setting goals, taking community input. The board is committed, the board, to the board and district admission goals. Our committees ensure that those goals and priorities are met. I personally try and execute and support the virtue, the vision and mission. As a board, we try and ensure that the district is run well. In my role, I work well with the entire board to keep that planning along. So you'll see that in all nine sections. And again, board members, we're going to see that in detail, but for tonight's planning, Ian, if, I'm so sorry, if you could switch back to the PowerPoint. For tonight's planning, the three specific areas, we did a chart just to highlight where we fell and it compares our answers from this year with last year. And again, further looks at our growth and helps us as a, as a board to determine some of the areas that we need to look at while we're doing our goals and our planning. So the first area of the board self-evaluation is how the board reacts. It's what I just shared with you in the individual responses. And you can see our answers from this year to last year, we, we've really, the value, if you look at of the 4.0, look how high we are as a board. Again, couldn't be more proud of that growth. The, the gray is the, on the four-point scale, the blue is your answer on that four-point scale. So again, it brings us to that, that summative 3.9 for that category I just detailed for you. In this category, this is the board to the individual. This is how you see your, your individual role compared to the full board role. And it's still in those same categories of planning, policy, student achievement, finance, board operations, board performance, superintendent and board relationships, board and student relationships and our board and community. And you can see, when you look at the individual, almost every single score is above that 3.5. And again, that speaks a lot to how the board members see themselves in relationship to this board of education and to what they're able to accomplish as an individual on a board of a whole. So again, I, I couldn't be more thrilled because we've had years where we've had some really specific issues that we've needed to, to talk about and look at for individual board members as, and the board of the whole. And this year, people felt, again, really strongly and positively. So I, I'm appreciative of that. The third chart is the current year versus the previous year. The dark green lines, the, the darker green lines are 2020. The lighter green lines are last year's board evaluation. And you can see in almost every area, the board has grown from last year to this year. And in the area of board and superintendent relationships, we stay steady, which is a good thing. If it went down, I would have been pretty worried. So again, even just comparing our board performance as, as each individual has assessed it is really strong. And, and I hope that you are all taking just a minute. And again, we'll go through the individuals with each individual board member. But as a group and as a community, you should really be very proud of the growth of the board, the growth towards goals and towards this process of goal setting each year. In committee, community members, we do keep track of the district and board goals. They're part of the agendas and we do take the time to, to look at and to, to value where we are in that process. Ian, if you could go to the next slide. So since we talk about the mission and vision, I thought it was important to remind everybody what that is, what you're committed to, what we're all committed to in Nutley. The mission statement is at the top, the vision below. But that mission to challenge, inspire and empower our students to be creative, confident, passionate, self-directed, all of those things that we value and I think are reflected. You know, when you hear Kent and Janine talk about our reopening plans, look at that focus on education. Look at our continued commitment to making sure that instruction is equally as important as getting the doors open. That, that mission of a district is carried through in everything that we do. And our vision, making sure that the system is sustainable, that ties back to the financial piece, obviously. Integrated, efficient, that we stay innovative and God knows if this, if this process of virtual instruction and hybrid doesn't keep us innovative, I'm not sure what does. But the district serves as the unifying and driving force in the community. It's what brings us all together, right? And looking at the growth of students, which we do throughout the year, Kent and Janine even, even remotely presented the performance data, the measurable student growth data throughout the year is what we use to make sure that our students are developing into the confident, responsible, productive and self-directed citizens that we hope that they'll be and also demonstrate that excellence, whether it's in their personal research base or other learning towards our standards and towards a pursuit of excellence. Ian, next. We, when we develop our goals, right, we start with that mission and vision. And as we've done each year, we've come back to our strategic plan, our five-year goals and our four focus areas to help us determine our priorities, right? We also built our task forces for reopening around these same strategic plan goals, around these same focus areas. And again, this is a five-year plan, so it extends until June 2023. For any community members that haven't seen the full plan or who have somehow missed our quarterly reports, it is on the district website. You can find it under the district tab, the complete plan. But under curriculum and programs, we're evaluating our existing offerings, looking at the process of curriculum development, implementation and instructional best practices, creating a delivery of assessments, analyzing student performance and looking at relevant learning experiences for all students. And although we could never have predicted this school year, we truly, if you look, if you look at this as a microcosm, this March to June, I think every single aspect of this curriculum and programs plan had to be looked at. And again, I think our entire leadership team, Kent, Janine, our principals, coordinators, every single person involved in the instructional program. I will tell you that on our task force, each of the four task force, we have a large number of our instructional staff, our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our child study team, our counseling staff who are volunteering in the summer to be a part of this. Because those people also are what make us successful in making sure not that we just receive, revisit our five-year goals, but that we're successful every single day. Health and wellness has become a true priority in the district. Again, not just because of the last five months of remote learning, isolation and some trauma, but because we believe really strongly in that social emotional learning, the physical and academic wellness and wellbeing of all of our students and staff. This committee has been very active along with curriculum and programs and developing our plan to return. Although we only detailed the, the curricular pieces tonight, when we do announce our full plan, you'll hear a number of those health and wellness initiatives that have continued from March through June through the summer and are continued well into the fall and into the next school year. So again, really pleased with how we're, we're working towards those goals. Ian? Our final two strategic plan focus areas are configuration and infrastructure and safety and security. Configuration and infrastructure looks at the best practices by instructional grade span, kind of like what you heard tonight. Looking at elementary school, middle school and high school. Looking at not just the instructional program, but the physical, the financial program and what the realities, the instructional realities of each of those areas are and how we can transform those within the district structure. And finally, safety and security. Safety and security has certainly also been a priority over the last several years and in the development of this plan. Making sure our schools are safe and secure, providing appropriate environments for students, staff and community members. um, to create that safe learning community. This um, particular piece of our strategic plan obviously plays a huge role in our ability to be able to return to school in some capacity in September. And this committee um, is, is very, very active in looking at how we can continue that safety and security while we're keeping um, everybody safe and well, coming back um, out into public, basically. Ian. So last year, we set four board goals, this group, um, that by June twenty twenty, the Board of Education members would continue to address the overcrowding, aging facilities um, and safety and security. Um, we've done the best we can with that. Um, the um, issue still is looming, however, um, for overcrowding and our facilities, I think that that will um, continue to be clear as we try and return to the buildings in some capacity. Safety and security, the board has done a tremendous job with those goals. Um, they've really worked hard to make sure that we're focused on secure entrances in each building, using our resources to make sure we added the Raptor system um, for ID, more cameras, um, looking at the Halo systems. Again, all of those are in the buildings, however, and our buildings have been closed. So I don't want you to overlook your success in this area, board members. You've really continued to have that focus and continued um, to look at these areas. By twenty twenty, the board members will ensure that the community understands the district's budget process and enhance a two-way community engagement. Um, even in this virtual environment, we continued to do um, virtual budget meetings, public budget meetings. We had several of those. We did um, try diligently to have a joint budget meeting with the Board of Commissioners. So people um, had the understanding of what was the Board of Education, scope of um, of responsibility financially, what's the township scope of responsibility, how the taxes are broken down. Unfortunately, that wasn't able to happen, but I will continue. And I know that um, Mr. Kozinski will continue to, to hope that we can find a way to have that joint meeting and that two-way community conversation. By June twenty twenty, the board will help the Nutley community understand the key roles and responsibilities of the board and its members. I believe this is the fourth time um, this year that we've done board members' roles and responsibilities. When our website was updated last September, the board um, page had a letter from the board president as well as one of the PowerPoints um, detailing those roles and responsibilities. And again, I know the board members, um, and Scott detailed this tonight under his piece of roles and responsibilities, have worked hard to follow the chain of command and help the community members understand um, how they can get their um, questions, concerns, suggestions addressed appropriately. And finally, by June twenty twenty, the board will ensure proper policies, processes and resources to achieve the district goals, all through the lens of financial sustainability. That goal um, has been ongoing. I think it will continue to be ongoing, even as we have the conversation tonight to set the next year's goals. We have a number of things that constrain us, um, not the least of which is a two percent cap and rising health costs, rising salary costs. Um, and in this school year, because of what we're required to um, to do with remote learning devices, with the return to school as far as um, deep sanitizing, um, accommodations, face coverings. Um, we, we, we definitely are looking at this through a different kind of lens of policy and a different kind of lens of financial sustainability. Ian. And we also set district goals during the retreat. Um, I think that again, these are, these are pretty consistent with what we've done and what we've been able to accomplish. Multiple data sources used to drive instruction, to monitor curriculum, new programs and district scheduling to foster professional growth and help improve student performance. Um, I don't think that we could ever have expected that the district scheduling and the work that we would do to monitor curriculum would be in this kind of environment. And yet we've been able to pivot very quickly to do that. Um, again, even in the virtual environment, we've continued to present the data. We've continued to use that data to drive instruction and we've continued with our program reviews um, to, to update um, that curriculum and programs. Um, by twenty twenty, analyze data and design a comprehensive pre-K to twelve approach for students and staff around um, health and wellness, resulting in a positive culture and climate for all. I did mention this um, as one of the strategic plan goals as well. And um, I think that everybody should be commended for the work that's happened in this area. Um, we can talk about a little bit more of that, maybe um, Janine, Terry and Erica, while we're developing the goals and trying to determine if that needs to remain a goal or if we, we move on to a different goal while this becomes systemic. Um, by June twenty twenty, communications enhanced between all stakeholders and district partners. I know um, Karen and Ian were able to launch a new website. Karen has made the maroon and gray, um, instead of a quarterly document, an ongoing piece tied to the curriculum. We've worked very hard um, to communicate through the website to create distinct tabs. For instance, our COVID tab and to be able to communicate even in some different ways. Um, I think all of us have come out of our comfort zone a little bit with these virtual meetings. I know I have with the videos um, and speaking to different members of the staff through video, but it's all been positive. Um, and finally, by June twenty twenty, the district will collaborate with local, state and national organizations as well as utilize internal resources to evaluate current procedures and identify new methods of security while continuing to promote the philosophy of see something, say something. Again, I think the board um, and the district has been very successful in this area. We have maintained our two safe school officers. We've expanded that by two more. Um, I'm thrilled that we have those two more as we try and reopen in September and, and need to be able to accommodate our students through um, perhaps temperature checks, daily contact tracing. They have been um, tremendous with our permitted and non-permitted um, restrictions that were implemented throughout this year. And when you look at what we've been able to accomplish, even in a virtual environment, um, the Raider Ride, the um, celebrations of the class of twenty twenty, the um, curbside pickup of locker materials, the, the, the curbside pickup of meals. All of those things come under the safety and security. And even in a virtual environment, um, it's remained a priority. So, so I'm pretty proud of that for all of us. Um, and I am hopeful that as we're looking to develop our goals, um, we, you might again, consider keeping some of these because they were all June twenty twenty and obviously we weren't able to um, reach that, that area. So um, Karen, I'm wondering, do we have, um, I know you wanted to come up with a process to Wordsmith like we would if we were in person?
Yeah, I have.
As if we were in person, so Ian.
I have a Google Doc and Ian's presenting, Ian's presenting it and all edited in real time as you make the changes or edits. Okay?
Perfect, thank you.
Ian, Ian, I, I believe that I could just begin typing, correct, to this document?
Yep, it's gonna show up directly on screen.
Okay.
Could you make it a little bigger, the words? So the board members can also see. And before we get started, I see a note in the chat that Danny's asking to speak. Danny Carnesala?
All right, I'm on. Um, I just wanted to, you know, looking at the, the district goals and the board goals. Um, and, and you kind of uh, started talking Dr. G with regard to um, at the moment where we started to get momentum to actually put these action plans into place. Um, you know, we, we find ourselves in the middle of, you know, this unprecedented COVID. Um, and I was just gonna make a suggestion, you know, across the board that, you know, we, we almost tried to maintain the majority um, of what we've already established because we really never gained any momentum. We did, we did get some things done or where we had some action plans to start moving towards accomplishing these goals. Um, but I'm thinking that, you know, we've lost a, a lot of time and momentum um, with what we were trying to establish, both district and board, on, on the district and board goals. Um, that, you know, might be advisable to, to really take a hard look at these and, and see if it makes sense to just move these um, to reflect the end of twenty twenty-one.
I, I agree, and I think that that, I, I hope when I talked about it, that that was reflected. I will say we've had some, some different issues come up during the course of the year that I hope we're able to wind in. Um, if we're gonna keep our existing goals, then maybe we're able to wind in some of these topics. Um, and I'm gonna say um, one of the topics would be equity. I think that we've, we've become very aware during the course of um, this school year, more so maybe than previously, that we, we need to focus on equity. And equity means um, resources, building to building, what one PTO perhaps is able to provide and not another. Um, where we're seeing grants, the NEF has become very um, aware and attuned to making sure that, you know, not all one school gets the grants, right? They, they work very, very hard to make sure they're distributed throughout the district. Um, we need to be looking at the equity of our staffing. Before we closed in March, we had planned a job fair to try and recruit staff members that um, were excellent and high-quality instruction and staff members, but also perhaps more reflected our student populations. Our current staff um, does not reflect our current student population. And I think as far as um, curriculum instruction and assessment, we've already begun in a lot of ways, right? Um, to look at culturally responsive teaching, to be able to build that in even into our social emotional um, programming that we're planning for. But as we're um, doing our program reviews, as we're looking at which resources to buy, really taking a hard look and identifying, again, who's represented? Who, who is it that is um, communicating? Um, I, I, that would be um, one issue that I think is, is an important issue that has arisen. Before we went out, we were looking to develop an equity team um, to um, to spearhead those efforts. And maybe that's a way, um, you know, to build that into the goals, the development of an equity team. And then that team could get into these finer points. But I, I really don't want that to be lost because even though it's not reflected in these goals, it became something important, I think, to all of us. Um, and not something um, that we would like to, to lose in the process. Any questions or comments on that? I wanted to make sure people have an opportunity to speak. Any disagreement? All right. So we, if we're gonna do that, we just have to find the appropriate place to, to include it, whether it's a board or a district goal. Any suggestions, uh, members on where you would add that equity piece?
I think I'd put it in a district for.
Yes. I would say the same thing, I think it's more of a district goal than, than a board uh, goal, personally.
Well, then let's focus on the board goals. And again, you have to decide if you want three or four, um, whatever you think that you can do. Um, Danny's suggestion to um, see what can remain intact to keep that momentum going. Um, let's just maybe Karen, start with the first one and see if there's any input to that.
So do we want to keep the first one as it is? Do we want to alter it? Do we want, do we feel as though it's no longer necessary? What are, what are the thoughts for district goal number one, multiple data sources to drive instruction?
I, I thought we were at board goals.
It is board, we're starting with board goals.
Oh, I, I apologize, I'm sorry, I thought we were.
Because Erica just suggested that that become a district.
Apologies. Um, number one, overcrowding, aging facilities, safety and security. Keep as it.
I think, I think we definitely need to keep it. I mean, if we want to add, but I don't think there's anything we could take out of it right now.
No, it probably even should be highlighted because that's, I think it should be even more of a priority. We started the conversation a little bit last night or the other night with the commissioners, um, some of the board members that were there. And then we continued that conversation with the mayor again today, um, the superintendent did. And I, I think um, we need to keep that conversation even stronger than it's ever been. Personally.
Um, we could add uh, something to the end. Board, board members will continue to address the overcrowding, aging facilities, safety and security. And you could say something like, and take steps to ensure you wanna go as far as that. Charlie, you're saying to make it a little bit stronger now, you're, not only are you continuing the conversation, but you're also taking steps to do something?
Yeah, we, we know, we know it's an important part of, of, of our problem, of our district problem or our board problem. Um, and I think we're trying hard from our point to uh, communicate that more. But I, I think we need to um, encourage discussion more with, with the town fathers. I think that started a little bit last night and today, um, but we need to continue that part of it, I think. Um, I, I'm pretty sure all board members feel strongly about keeping this and, and making it stronger. I don't, I don't know how to make it stronger except that we need to spend more discussion with it. Certainly at our PTOs, certainly at our, any times we're at a function where it involves the township, in, in my opinion.
Instead of saying like, continuing to address, can we say something like uh, something about putting the word prioritizing in there, I think might be a good.
How about you say, um, how about you keep the first part, Erica, and then you say, and prioritize.
Yeah.
Question um, of this topic with the township.
And stakeholders or something to that effect.
Or something like this.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think that makes it a little, I think it.
You're keeping the first part, you're addressing it, but you're also prioritizing the discussion of this topic with the township and community stakeholders? That makes it a little bit stronger?
Yes.
Good?
Thank you.
Good?
That's great.
Okay. Um, number two, by June twenty twenty-one, we can change that to board members will ensure that the community understands the district's budget process and enhances two-way community engagement. I think David, just from my perspective, spoke a little bit about that at the beginning, uh, perhaps with the a new district BA in central office. Um, we can keep this as a, as a board goal and maybe just do the same, enhance it a bit. What, what are the thoughts?
I agree, Karen. I think, I think David is gonna be an asset on getting that word out to their, um, out to the public. Um, and I, I think just, just making it the same as number one, stronger. Um, because it's something we've been lacking, but I think the lacking has been from our side. And I think David's gonna help us correct that problem.
You want to, I'm just typing as, as you speak, um, do you wanna just bring to attention under the leadership of a, of a new business administrator or?
No, I, I, I don't think we need to do that. I, I'm, I just think his, his mannerisms are gonna help the communications not only with, not only with the township and with the stakeholders, but with the board members. Board members are looking for more budget communications, for lack of a better term.
Okay, so, um. Don't we could lose? But Erica?
Trying to find a way, I'm trying to see.
Really, one, one thing you said earlier when you were talking was you said that sometimes you, it's just that small committee, the finance committee who understands the process. So you can expand it a little bit and say that not only the community, but the board as a whole understands?
Yeah, that's.
Because it's not just the community that you're striving to reach. You want all nine of you to understand the, the process as well?
Yes.
Yeah, but I, can I interject on this one for a second?
Sure.
I think if, if we're saying that the board as a whole, I mean, it's kind of insinuating that, I, I, this is me. I don't know if I'm right or not, but insinuating that they don't know the process. And, and I'm pretty sure that our board as a whole does know goes into it.
Okay.
So maybe as a board as a whole is um, something about that we're, that, that the board as a whole is communicated with, maybe. Not, we understand, but like Charlie was saying, maybe some people that weren't on the finance or ad hoc weren't communicated to as well, so just to like. So just to, like, something about beefing up the communication of it.
Okay.
Okay, um.
And the board as a whole is engaged, maybe?
I like that.
Me too.
Thanks Frank.
So you thought I wasn't here anymore?
I don't think you would add, just put the F on the board and that was it.
No, I'm here.
We should do the emergency roll call, cameras on and.
How to do that? How can I just put the C up there and disappear like Frank did?
Board members will ensure that the community understands the district budget process and enhances two-way community engagement as well as engagement from the board as a whole. I just, I just highlighted that for myself because engagement's used twice. I, I might just play around.
I think it understands, the community understands and the board of, as a whole is engaged. I think. Board member?
So remove this part here.
So ensures the community understands the district budget process.
And the board as a whole engage, and, and enhances engagement. How about this? And enhances engagement from the board as a whole?
I, I think, I think we know what we're trying to say, so I, I'm not.
But you, again, this becomes on your district website.
So that the community understands the budget process and enhances engagement from the board as a whole.
Or maximizes engagement?
Sure.
I like that one too.
You're doing good, Erica. Prioritize.
Feeling better.
See what happens?
By June 2021, board members will ensure that the community understands the district budget process and maximizes engagement from the board as a whole.
Very good.
But, okay.
That'll cover it.
I don't know if you would like to keep three. By June 2020, the board will help the Nellie community understand the key roles and responsibilities of the board and its members. I know we spoke a little bit, a couple of minutes earlier about what we've done this year to hit on this goal. So I don't know if it's needed or if we want to remove it or add to it.
I think you're doing a good job with it. You have to decide, you know, to Danny's point, do you want to keep everything? Or can you, can you have three really prioritized goals that you can get behind?
Well, I guess the, the big question is if we ask certain, if we walk down to the community right now and ask anybody what our goal, what our board role was, how many times do you think we're gonna get the right answer?
That's the problem. And I don't think, I don't think as much as we communicated out there, the, the, the district still does not understand what our real role is as board members. I don't know how you're ever gonna overcome that personally.
Well, we could keep trying.
Yeah, I, no, I, no, I agree with you. I agree. Maybe we can, maybe we can leave it there and, and with, if, if and when we ever get back to normal, when we have our town hall meetings again, that'll be one of the discussions we'll have to fit into our town hall meetings on what board response. Or again, I can, we go back to the PTOs, let the PTOs know, some of them do, now there's a new, there's new leadership in some of the PTOs. Maybe it's a good time to let them know what our role is as board members.
Yeah, I think we should leave it. I don't think it's gonna hurt to leave it too.
Okay, so we can leave that as is?
Yes.
Well, just remind Scott that we'll do this four more times next year too.
Yes, and if you, if you need me at any of those town hall meetings or PTO meetings to, from a legal aspect, reinforce what the roles and responsibilities are so they can get educated. Please feel free, I'd love to be part of it.
Okay, so we'll leave that. I just changed the year. By June 2021, the board will help the Nellie community understand the key roles and responsibilities of the board and its members. Good?
Yes.
Okay, number four is by June 2020, the board will ensure proper policies, processes and resources to achieve district goals, all through the lens of financial sustainability.
I think we've done a good job. You know, Erica and our team have made great strides in the policy corrections, updates. I, I think this is an ongoing process. I don't know that we want to get rid of them, but I, I think we just need to keep moving in the, in the same direction.
I'm sorry, Terry, were you talking?
No, I was just saying just update that because that's going to, especially this year, we're going to really need to address all of that.
Yes.
And I was gonna say, Paul Ferrero is not on the call, and I feel an obligation to keep that financial sustainability piece in there. He would, he would, I know, would speak towards that.
No, I, I think we need to leave it, Karen. Just change the date.
Okay, so that's changed. So now it's just by June 2021. We ready to move on to district?
Danny, Danny has a question.
Oh, sure, go ahead. Sorry, I'm, I'm in the different screen.
No, he just said that his dogs are barking and he can't say anything, but he's typing, leave it in.
Okay, got it.
So district goals, I think that's where we.
I was gonna say, good job, board goals. That was fast and, and efficient. Thank you, everybody.
So I think the conversation earlier was about perhaps adding one here about equity.
Or adding it into something.
Removing one, adding it. So the first one is about multiple data sources, sources being used to drive instruction and closely monitor curriculum, new programs and district scheduling to foster professional growth and help improve student performance. I don't know.
Which is important right now, especially with everything that's going on. The multiple data sources this year are probably gonna be most important out of any year that we've had because of the virtual aspect. So that's probably the best one, in my opinion, to stay as number one right now.
Okay, so leaving it as is. Do you want to add anything, Erica, specific to the, to the virtual component or just?
Is that where we, is that where we can fit in the inclusion part that we're talking about, Dr. Glazer? Into that number one, can we fit in the, uh, the inclusion diversity we're looking at?
Well, I think equity is more across the board, not just instruction.
Okay.
I, I, I would think just from my perspective that maybe that's, this is such an important conversation that maybe the equity piece is its own standalone. It touches on so many different components. I'm not sure if there's one that you want to remove in order to do that. Five goals might be two, might be a lot. But I, I'm not sure that there's one that we feel as though we don't, we no longer need.
If, just in my opinion, if everybody just wants to stay, I, I think out of all four, if we were to replace one with that one, because that's so important. I really feel like in health and wellness, I think we've made, my opinion, the most strides. Especially with the, the stuff that we've been working on recently in the committee and work you guys have been doing. Just, just reading what the four of them are, I don't see getting rid of the, you know, the see something, say something in the security or the communications. And obviously, number one, we said we're keeping. So if five was too much, if we can't incorporate it in one other one, my, my opinion would be two. I think we've made the biggest strides. I don't know how anybody else feels.
I would agree that we, I, I'm only speaking because I'm on the Health and Wellness Committee, Erica, along with you. I think we've made tremendous strides. I know Janine's been, Janine and April and Meredith have been spearheading a lot of these social emotional learning programs that, that we're looking to implement in, in September. I, my only concern is I, I don't want to stop the momentum of that because I, I think especially during virtual, we're seeing so many staff and students struggle with wellness. Maybe that, maybe this is one that we can beef up with something regarding equity for all or inclusiveness, I'm not sure.
With a focus on equitable practices or something like that and add it to number two.
I think we, we need, if we're gonna do it, I think that needs to have some teeth, right? The same way, you know, we said, we have a whole strategic plan area around health and wellness. So I don't know that this goal is gonna fall by the wayside. But I, I think the same way we, we prioritized health and wellness, we have to prioritize equity and inclusion. And I don't know, I don't know that it can be added on to the end of a sentence.
No, I think, I think we should go with five goals personally. I, I know that gives us a, a difficult agenda, but all five of what we're looking at here, including the new one, are, are, are important to our district. So we're gonna, in my opinion, I think we should struggle through five goals.
Danny's saying in the chat, wait, hold on, Danny just said something. I didn't see it. Three and four align almost perfectly with the board goals. And we may want to consider maintaining really close to current. Three and four align perfectly with the board goals, and we may want to consider maintaining really close to current.
Sorry, my dog stopped barking. So what I meant by that is. I wouldn't, I wouldn't change that much because I think with the way that they align very well with the, with the board goals, it keeps continuity between the district.
You, you had add a fifth goal?
I mean, the fifth goal, remember, the fifth goal, the more we add, the more we, the more we're gonna, I think, struggle and, and it may dilute.
It, it is a priority area. I mean, I don't know how we can not add it.
Correct. So if we, if we, if we can include it in one of these others, then I don't think we have a choice, right? We have to, it's important enough to have it somewhere or by itself.
Is there any way to combine anything we already have, like one and two maybe, or is that too much to having one? It's like a rambling sentence almost then.
How about number three? Can we add the diversity to number three? Because communication, can we add something to that about the diversity? I'm just thinking.
Trying to. See, communications will be enhanced between all stakeholders and district partners.
When I, can I just ask a question about number three? I mean, coming from the Director of Communications, I don't know if this is, this is the best thing to say. But to me personally, I feel like number three kind of goes without saying, like that's something that we're always striving to do. And we would, every organization, especially at this challenging uncertain time during COVID, is striving to, to expand their communications. I'm just wondering if, if it kind of at this point is known, right? Like we've, we've made strides over the last couple of years. You've hired a Director of Communications. It's in kind of intertwined and woven in through all of our other goals. Obviously during this time, that's a, a priority. If you feel like five is too many, maybe that's the one that just kind of stands on its own and is part of what we do. Now it's so ingrained in us. It's been a goal for so many years that it's just what we do.
Say, so board members, you have to decide, is it, is it something that is systemic, right? Like what Karen's talking, communication is what we do. That's an expectation of the district. Versus something new.
I, I see, you know, and these are district goals. So I mean, obviously the board is involved in them, but they're district goals. How about Janine or Kent or, or Dave? Is there something else that you think might work? Are we allowed to, they're allowed to be part of our organization? Are we think it's a district?
I would agree with Karen. I, I, I would take out goal number three. With the understanding of that's something we will do and strive for always and add an equity goal there.
Yeah, I agree with you. And I think three, we've embedded a little bit more. And, and I think health and wellness is well on its way. So I see a lot of these as like work in progresses. So I think adding the equity piece is, is a big push.
Don't you think that the, the, the goals for 2021 have to somewhere incorporate the re-entry? No, the re-entry from, from, from.
That's a good point.
From, uh, from COVID and the possibility of, of taking everything into effect and always keeping the health, safety and welfare of everybody first and foremost by doing that. But I think the word, the, like, these seem to be a, a mirror of last year, which are great. But I think if, if, if the word, the re-entry or the, the reconfiguration of, of scheduling or so, I don't know the words, that would be Karen maybe could put a twist on it. But I think it gives the community a sense of, they really did look at the goals and they're, and, and they're aligning them and also re-entering the students in a safe and, 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 and mental health aspect and a safe environment. But they're looking out for that. Maybe I'm not articulating it correctly, but I, I definitely think we need to address having this re-entry come back into these goals. Because there's a possibility we're gonna go back home again and have to do it again.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, David. I, I think it could probably, I think we might be remiss if this year's goals, as we come upon. Don't, you know, I, I think it would be problematic if they don't include the word re-entry or talk about that. It could probably fit in with goal number two because we're so concerned with the health and wellness of our students and staff during this re-entry period. So maybe goal number two expands to talk about that. Are there any thoughts on that?
You, you may want to consider taking out analyze data and design a comprehensive pre-K-12 approach and maybe somehow replace that with, alluding to what David's talking about, the re-entry and, and that aspect. Because to, 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 to a certain degree, we have done that. We have looked at data in different programs, brought in programs. So that part of it may, may be something we've moved forward on. But the next part is finding a way to incorporate the restart in, in, you know, school.
Could, can you use the word align? Align with the state, with the state standards and, and, and district and township unique needs or something like that? Some, somewhere in there and incorporate the re-entry so that everybody knows that we, we looked at the state's criteria. We analyzed the personalized Nutley's criteria, but we've also re-entered everybody in a, in a health, uh, safety and wellness standpoint from the whole thing. And now you've incorporated everything. And it looks, even though we have, you've identified that we've done our homework and taken everything into consideration. And now it's acknowledged on the website. And what about the, the CDC? Do we need to mention the CDC just, just to, just to make sure that everybody knows that we've, we've looked at every little vein of, of this and the arms of everything? Just so we're covered.
I would say that might be a little bit granular for, for the goal. But I, I, we should mention it in our communications.
Karen, can you put safety in, design and implement a comprehensive pre-K-12 approach to students that, safety, health and wellness?
Do we also want to put for goal number one, we could add in the word, multiple data sources will be used to drive virtual or, and, and slash hybrid instruction and closely monitor curriculum, new programs? Because then we've added that in to, to reflect this year as well to the programming piece.
Good. But now we've addressed it twice, so that's good. Two different goals.
Yeah, I like that it's not a standalone goal, but it's like woven into the goals that we already have. We're just keeping it in mind and preparing for it while we keep our vision. Oh, Karen, you're muted.
Sorry, my, my dog too was barking. Sorry. So by June 2021, design and implement a comprehensive pre-K to 12 approach to student and staff, safety, health and wellness, especially during the re-entry period while navigating through the health challenges of the school year and aligning with state, local, federal, state, local and CDC guidelines.
So I wouldn't put CDC. I think I would just leave federal, state and local. CDC should be, is implied.
CDC is federal.
Federal, right. I mean, it doesn't mention COVID by name, but obviously we know what it is. Do we, do we want that word in, in our, in our goal?
I, I wouldn't. I think.
Health challenges is fine. So design and implement a comprehensive. Health challenges is fine. So design and implement a comprehensive approach to safety, health and wellness, especially during the reentry period while navigating through the health challenges of the school year and aligning with state, federal and local guidelines.
Maybe the reentry to school period. So it's clear what we're talking about.
We know it's during the school year, so I'll just remove that. Uh, good thoughts? Thank you.
I can see how these can translate to building, uh, department and personal goals.
Right, and that's what our, what we said we were going to try and do, right?
Mm hmm, yeah.
And that, that honors also what, um, April, Meredith and Lori asked us from the task force to see how, how health and wellness can become a building goal. So we honor them also.
Great. Um, three, I think is where we were talking about, um, equity, you know, whether it's diversity, um.
I, I think by twen, by June 20, well, I hate by June 2021, but I guess that's how all our goals are written. Um, that, that, um. I just want to say that we're taking intentional action.
To increase, uh, equitable opportunities for stakeholders.
Equitable. But I just, equity and inclusion, so. So equitable and inclusive, maybe?
Yep.
Do, do we have to use June 21? Is that something because that's going to be till next year? I mean, can we put in this moving forward? I mean, uh, because that's going to be.
2021 either, because I want it to feel like we're, we're in it, right? Not, you know.
Kent, do you want to say stakeholders or like we're really focusing this towards?
I don't want to say, Karen, I don't want to say work to increase. I want to say that we will take intentional action. We, we can't just work on this. We, we must take intentional action to increase, um, equitable and inclusive opportunities. And I would just say for all. Because it's students, it's everybody.
Um, is there, is there an education piece here about the education of like, or empathy towards or understanding of diversity? Do we, I, I would personally really love to see the word diversity included somewhere in this. I think, you know, we all, we all know, know what we're talking about, but.
Maybe with the intentional, like will intentional action regarding like instruction or something like that, like with that intentional action, could we be more specific about being inclusive with our curriculum? Or something like that?
So to increase equitable, equitable opportunities, um, in, in what? Cur- curriculum? In, I mean, because it's really culture and climate, it's diversity, it's everything.
Culture, culturally diverse education while expanding culturally diverse education. That takes into account curriculum as well.
Doesn't take into account like LGBTQ, it doesn't take into account some of the other issues that, that are, that we're trying to work to do.
Um, what if you just said while expanding the, um.
Can we say like overall diversity, maybe?
I, yeah, I mean, I think the word diversity Julie includes all of that. To me it does anyway. It includes race, it includes religion and includes sexual orientation, gender.
I'm fine with the word diversity. You just have to figure out how to do it.
Before that, so it's, it's, it's more, you know.
Kent, can you say again what you said without the word cultural? I'm sorry.
I forgot. Well, for all, while spending the, um, it's not diversity education, while, while expanding the diversity of our educational system.
Equitable and inclusive opportunity.
Right, because that's really what we're talking about. We're talking about curricular staffing, our whole system of education. We're looking to.
Right.
Julie, can the beginning sentence, beginning of the sentence say beginning September 2020? Instead of by?
We've already begun this.
All right, so then.
But I, that's my problem with the by 2021.
Can we say beginning or ongoing or?
Yeah, I'm fine with that, but it doesn't.
Twenty twenty-one is the, the time measurable.
I was gonna say, that's.
So mo- most, most strategic goal setting is, is time, you know, time sensitive. It has a, a time to it. Now, that, that time can be expanded. When you hit June 2021, you could, like we're doing in other goals, is just extend that and, and specify, but yeah.
So I just wordsmithed a bit. By June 2021, the district will take intentional and ongoing action to increase equitable and inclusive opportunities for all while expanding the diversity of our entire educational system.
Board members, you have to be comfortable.
I'm comfortable.
I like that. I like that.
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm okay.
Um, but last one is by June 2020, the district will collaborate with state, local and national organizations as well as utilize internal resources to evaluate current procedures and identify new methods of security while continuing to promote the philosophy of see something, say something.
I would leave the.
Again, that needs to stay there for. I'm sorry.
You guys did a great job wordsmithing that one last year. I don't know. That you want to.
You, we've tweaked the, the top three. So if this one stayed as is, I, I think it would still be relevant.
We made it strong last year. So I, I think we're still good there.
Okay. Great, that one.
I agree.
I agree too.
Good.
Excellent job, everybody. And it's six fifty-six, so you're even better than you thought you were. I'm thrilled, um, that, that we've been able to come to this place. I'm thrilled that everybody, um, has a voice. I want you to know Fred just texted. He is at closed session. He said, bring a sweater. The air conditioning is blowing. I'm gonna, I will email the, um, custodian and see if we can turn that down just a little bit. Um, do we have any additional, um, goal comments for the retreat? Then I'm going to say to you all again, thank you. It takes a lot. You know, we've had a lot of meetings, right? I think all of us have been in a meeting at least once, um, with this group, if not two or three or four or five times this week. And that commitment as board members, I think is what's most lost on the community. When we talk about the roles and responsibilities of board members, they, you know, people think it's 10 hours a month and, and in all honesty, it's more than 10 hours a week. You should be commended for your volunteerism, your commitment and your engagement. I'll say it, you know, publicly here in this open board meeting, I'll say it to individually. Thank you. It makes a big difference to, to the whole community. Thank you.
Charlie?
Thank you, thank you very much. I need to read, I'm sorry, Terry, go ahead.
You need to, you, you need to have some, have a public comment. Ask for public comment. It's a public meeting. We open back up.
Yeah, I know that. We're still open, right?
Yeah, we're done. I think that was the last comments before you go.
Are there any, are there any public comments? Ian?
All of the public has left the meeting.
Good.
Okay, now I'm going to read my statement to go into close, right Dave?
Uh, yes.
Okay, whereas the Board of Education will be discussion manager exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10412. Now therefore be resolved, the Board of Education recess to close executive session at this time to discuss personnel and legal matters. We have further resolve that the results of the discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of a subsequent meeting of the Board of Education or when the reason for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exists. Make the motion.
I make the motion.
I would just like to add that you need to estimate the amount of time that we will be enclosed before you reopen. Uh, how long would you estimate that our time's going to be?
We will probably be enclosed for fifteen minutes to a half hour, no more.
And no public action to be taken when you come out.
No public action to be taken when we come out.
We're good.
All right, I make the motion.
Second.
Frank second. Thank you.